You know what I do? I forget. And then a year later, I'm like.
Right, yeah.
Where the hell is for that? Are we supposed to record?
Well, just once we go into executive session now.
Okay.
Correct. For you, but for opening the meeting.
Correct. All right, so it's six thirty. This is the opening executive session, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three. All council members are present. We're now going to shut off all our including your license, please.
I moved.
Okay. Seven twenty, Monday, December fourth. Regular meeting of the Winthrop Town Council. Okay, all members are present. So we won't roll. First on the agenda is the executive allegiance. That's fine, over there.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
I never say that.
Okay. Now is the commentary, if anyone has anything to say on any subject. Take a few minutes at the podium. No one has any comments? Okay, item two oh seven is going to be opened at seven twenty-one. Public hearing. Public hearing. With zoning ordinance amendments to meet the requirements of LD two oh three. And actually implement the recommendations of commission to increase housing opportunities in Maine by setting zoning and land with restrictions. That's going to be open at seven twenty-one. Hey, who wants to start off?
So. So our town planner, Dawn Anderson, is joining us because and so, Dawn, you want to turn your camera on, please?
The camera is on. I'm not sure why I'm not showing. Can you hear me?
If you can hear yourself, we'll just forge on, so just a a brief opening remark on even and then Dawn can take it, but. We presented this to you at the last meeting. The only so we had our county attorney Bill Soccher review this language. The only change that he made was the. Of in paragraph two. You can see the reference to the two thousand ten Winter Conference of Plan. And then the language and depicted on the Winter zoning map, which I provided a copy for you as well. So those were the only changes that the town's attorney offered to what was presented to him. So, Dawn, you want to give a brief explanation of what the council had before then?
I apologize, it's very choppy on my end, I don't know if it's our connection. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, as Anthony just indicated, there really aren't any changes from the last time that you had this discussion. Except for we have a representation, the visual image of where that growth area is. And that map, the hatched areas, if the town council adopts this provision. That area will become the new affordable housing overlay district and that map will be modified accordingly in terms of title, date of. Approval, et cetera.
We're feeling really disperated.
So, if I might ask, looking at this map. And look in the appendix, it says overly zoning district, public water supply, resource protection, shoreland stream. They can't be overlaid.
So the the bad map is a representation of the existing zoning map. And what's been overlaid on it are the hatched areas which were taken from the two thousand ten comprehensive plan. So it represents what the town at that time said, this is where we want the growth to be directed. So that's been transferred over. So if adopted, those will be melded and that will become the zoning map, the current zoning map. Which will include the affordable housing overlay district and I do apologize because I it's a little choppy, I want to make sure that I'm understanding and answering the question correctly.
You did, it's fine, Dawn, so so and just to add on to that. If when you adopt, you definitely to the conference of plan, you change the designated growth area, then we will have to come back and amend this. This map.
But if we're looking at the this and this, is this all what's what was the comprehensive plan and what was the new changes if you're looking at this?
So the hash marks that you see are the designated growth area. So the overlay. Accessory dwelling units is in the designated growth area, so the hash mark and the designated growth area, as Andy just pointed out. Touches several different zones. And so the hashed area could be in any of a number of different zones, but this is the designated growth area as delineated in the two thousand ten conference of plan. Does that make sense, London?
The thing I'm. Thing I'm concerned about is those designated growth areas in the two thousand ten plan. A lot of attention wasn't paid to the environmentally sensitive areas because they didn't include. They included new housing and possibly smaller housing units, but as I might recall, from thirteen years ago. They didn't include. It's really greatly smaller lot sizes than two building units per lot, which is my understanding of what we're going to try to do here.
So there there isn't a question on the table night tonight of where the two thousand ten growth district was located and why? The the question is only. Is the council in a position to go ahead and adopt the affordable housing overlay district in that area? And the reason why that's being proposed is because the state. In trying to increase the availability of more housing to decrease regulatory barriers. One of the things that they've done is they've said that. In order to have this affordable housing overlay district, you could designate it in an existing. Predetermined growth area, which this is. You could also expand it to where we have public water and sewer, there has been not been an analysis analysis of that done to date yet. Those layers are being created and they'll be more readily ascertainable so that we can look at that, but at this time. What what the recommendation is is for the predetermined. Growth district in the two thousand and ten plan.
And Andy, to address your concern, paragraph four says that the projects that meet the definition of affordable housing development. As defined by this ordinance are subject to, and then you step down to letter C on the next page. Shorelands zoning requirements. So. So there are still all safeguards to prevent. Runoff within the shorelands zoning.
Yeah, you'd have to amend that to include public water supply, resource protection, constraint protection.
Yeah, can.
And then that would be okay.
Here, can I just say something? When we talk about affordable housing developments, are we talking about? More than two or four housing units here, we're talking about project areas, is this what we're talking about for this? I I I need to know before I vote on anything like this, because when I look at this affordable housing. And I look at on page two here, you're looking at, you know, eighty percent. Of the median income, one hundred and twenty percent of the median. This is getting into a whole nother. Deal here, I guess, where, you know, are there large? Units that are going to be potentially put in. As affordable housing. Are there going to be like projects areas, I mean, I, you know, they tried to put a project up here years ago on.
Worst.
And that was way voted down, or the residents showed up here, we had a whole, we had a whole room full of people there. So I guess before I vote on any of this stuff, I want to know what this is for affordable housing, when it is it projects? Is it, you know, one or two units, what is this?
Mr. Chairman? If I may. Uh, the answer is yes, the answer is yes, that there the intention is to allow affordable housing to be built and for the town. And for the town to decide in advance what's the appropriate location for that. Any projects that came in would have to go to the planning board. So this is not approving a project, but it is approving. The locations in town, which at this time the town is saying is preferred, is more desirable from multiple standpoints when being environmental. You know, as far as where there's road, roads already are, you know, where the infrastructure is, so. The town is reexamining that under the update of the comprehensive plan, but at this time, the snapshot. That you're looking at says this is where we feel. As this development comes in, where it should be located and then the planning board would examine it on a case by case basis, you are not looking to approve any particular project or particular location.
I I understand that, but what this is is one first step down that road and one first step. To potentially allowing huge developments. In this town, I mean, if you have an ordinance that allows it. I would think you'd have, yes, you have, you know, input from the community. But at the same time, you'd be hard pressed. I would think, and again, I don't know, but to, you know, deny a potential. Huge project here. I mean, you'd have to probably show. Some significant reasons why you would deny that, this is what they're trying to do. At the state level is to promote this, and I think that this town needs to think long and hard about whether or not you want to go down this road. Because once you have this ordinance in place, it's going to be very difficult, in my opinion, and I'm not an attorney. To deny somebody that that unless you've got major. You know, again, and I don't, I don't know. But I would think it'd be difficult to deny that, so. There is potential for major projects of a lot of units coming in. And. That means more taxes for more services. People have to think long and hard about this. I'm not voting for this.
Okay, how about?
Mr. Chairman?
Can you want, go ahead, Dawn, and then Bruce is going to speak.
I just want to clarify that this is actually mandated by the state and I understand the concerns that were just raised. You really want to think about what your current zoning subdivision and potentially the creation of some site plan regulations are. And maybe updating those to address some of the things that you've just meant to mention could be strong concerns that the planning board has purview over that as projects come in. But just as a reminder, the the state is mandating that the town. Make. Designate a location for these affordable developments, it doesn't mean that. We're mandated to go get them and encourage them to comply, but if they apply, where where should they go and it is state mandated.
Thank you, Dawn, now Bruce would like to speak.
I'm having to concur with Councilperson Contrera. Dawn, I don't know, do you live in the town of Winthrop? Is that one? She does not. Oh, she does not, okay, well, I knew and I was opposed to that when it was proposed about ten years ago. Came up here and I've heard from a dozen other taxpayers in my area. That are vehemently opposed to anything, they don't give a dudley squat about the state and the LD twenty twenty, they care about their homes and their property values. It's going to be an extra burden on police, fire protection, everything else, and we don't stop it now or sit back and reconsider it. Before we adopt a comprehensive plan, then we're putting an ordinance in place without a without a plan being in. You know, it's it's kind of vague.
Well, what Dawn said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, what you said was we if we attack it from. The zoning. Basically, the zoning law, what we have here in the in town, if we don't want large scale projects, we can do it that way, correct?
My recommendation would be to adopt what the minimum requirements of the state are. Because otherwise we will not be in conformance and the town could potentially be fined. All of the other concerns that you all have raised are completely understandable and it is my recommendation that you look very closely, you charge the planning board. And staff are looking very closely at those zoning regulations that you have, the subdivision regulations and the creation of some site plan regulations, so that as projects come in. You have all the tools that you need to look at to make sure there isn't the scattered or premature development that's going to impact the environment and the tax rate, et cetera, et cetera.
I would also like to point out.
Chair recognizes Elizabeth, I guess.
Yeah. I would also like to point out that this is harkening back to my real estate base, but the town tax map are not always accurate. They're drawn to estimation based on other people's deeds, but not all deeds are done by degrees and angles. Some are done by, such as mine, north on Farmer Joe's land, south on Farmer Brown's land, west on, you know, so and so's land. There's no actual degrees and angles.
Forget three paces past the old oak tree.
Right, 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 three paces past the old oak tree that now has been dead for ten years. So so we have to keep in mind that whatever we're doing for development has to have proper. Surveys. And actual lines and. Degrees and angles in the description so that it's not encroaching on other business properties.
Just have just a few quick points to.
Okay. Boy. All right, did you want some, say something?
Yeah, I think I need to clarify two quick things.
All right, and then I got to get Bruce to forward.
Okay, so so what you have before you is a tax map, so not, excuse me, a zoning map, not to be confused with a tax map, so they are two separate things, so. So what we're talking about here is allowing accessory dwelling units and affordable housing in certain zoning districts, so opposed to, you know, tax maps. The second thing is that. The state has mandated in a council form of government that we adopt this. By or have enacted by January first. So that's the reason that we're here right now is for sure embracing the clock in order to need to stay mandated.
Do they mandate how big of an area we have to allow it?
Well, so as Dawn mentioned. In the designated growth area and right now, the designated growth area that we have is from the two thousand ten conference of plan and as I mentioned earlier. When we adopt the update of that in two thousand twenty-four, I'm supposing, then that is. Then at that point, you know, you'll be able to designate what the designated growth area is. But that's the area that we that we want development to occur in, most of the development in, whether it's likely to be residential in nature.
So this whole thing. Given the conversations we've had about the future land use and all that stuff. The discussions we were, at that point, the discussion we were having was increase lot size in rural areas. Doesn't that kind of? Contradict? Allowing accessory dwelling units, you know, the idea was to increase the lot size to prevent sprawl. But if we're going to allow this type of development out in the residential areas, isn't that going to increase sprawl in a major capacity?
Yep.
Counselor, this is mandated by by state law.
But but I guess the question is, is this mandated by, we don't have to take our comprehensive plan. And say, this is what we're looking at, can't we say within these areas, this is the only area we're looking at, we don't have to adopt everything with the comprehensive plan, correct? We can say, well, we don't want all this stuff, we only want this little area right here. What 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 prevents us from doing that?
Do we have to use the terminology?
Oh, growth area.
Yeah.
Okay, we got at least one counsel that had a chance to speak, I'd like to get.
I I guess that's a question for either Anthony or Dawn.
All right, but first I'd like to give James a minute.
I I wanted to kind of chime in on my exact thoughts, I mean, I look at this and when this first was presented, I was thinking. Accessory dwelling was going to be like somebody, your family member or something could be building it up. Right, mother in law apartment, thank you, and I thought that was what we were looking at, to allow that to happen. I didn't think it was going to be, and nothing against, seems like a big project with this overlay that you're showing me here, where we're going to develop some affordable housing. It's kind of congested anyway, especially in this downtown area, I mean, I would like to have a review case by case, but I think that you guys got a pretty big. Area that I'd rather see where there's can. Take some expansion in some areas versus this downtown area and again, I was thinking it was going to be some big complexes that were going to come into town and do different things. Because we've got a lot of, we've we've got some, you know, the mills always is a good thing, you know, we can also turn that into something, but I think. The overlay, I'm not comfortable with this overlay here because it's showing a very big chunk of our downtown and I'm not on board with that.
Yep.
And I would open rural areas.
Also.
Out in the rural areas as well.
I need to kind of try to correct, but I think it's a misconception. The comprehensive plan in two thousand and ten, we had quite a large group and we we split it into subcommittees. And as it so happens, I was on the subcommittee for zoning. And we didn't recommend putting more housing. In any of the environmentally centered zoning districts, what we recommended was finding vacant areas like say in the fields up behind Bob Barrows, those places. And go into smaller lot sizes and allow a mother in law plan and working out a way with the sewer district to get water and sewer up there. That would accomplish a couple of things, not the least of which is to reduce the sewer bills because we'd have more housing on the sewer lines. We didn't recommend putting. You know, extra. Housing in the public water supply, resource protection, shoreland and stream protection.
Well, with regards to Linda's concern about. The the exponential growth in in these areas, because this this was part of the two thousand ten conference plan and I was there too, so I know what you're talking about. Part of the issue was, we were talking back then, and I laugh because it's so expensive now to think about. But we were talking back then about extending the sewer and water lines up these roads, which that's going to prevent it right away, because you're not going to be able to get a well. To be able to support a hundred units up there in like Sturman Hill Road or out of forty-one. Because there's no public water, the public water and sewer, I can tell you stops right there. Doesn't even come close. And it's what, a million dollars for half a mile?
A million dollars, by all means.
A million dollars a mile, and not only that, like, for example, on my road, you can't, you have to put the water on one side and the sewer on the other. But I have protected trees on my side of the road, so they can't cut through those, they can't cut through the roots to put in the water, so they're screwed. So that's going to prevent things as well, so this is just, is this just a way for us to meet? The letter of the law for the state to make them happy, but going forward in the future, we still as a council, you guys still as a council and the zoning board. As a zoning board, will still have to approve whatever comes in.
But but we don't approve, we don't approve. Units.
Projects.
We don't, we don't approve that, and I'm not comfortable with all of this, I don't care what what the comprehensive. This is different, the things have changed, they've evolved, so now we have to look at this in a new light. And we have to look at this as, do you want to extend? The area in which you can do development and my, I'm saying, no, I don't want to look at this.
You're not going to have to worry about it because they can't extend the water in the sewer.
I don't care what they come up with, I'm just saying is I'm not uncomfortable with it. I I want, I want this area shortened and I want it tight and nice and small.
I'm I'm proud.
Mr. Chairman?
Let's, we have a more explicit map that doesn't include the environmentally sensitive areas and encourage you to see expansion of the water, so just. Close discussion. Did you have, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, there was, so there was a couple of criteria the state had outlined. One of the things that you could do is what we've proposed, you could also utilize areas that are sewer and watered, I don't have a representation of that. It, there may be a lot of overlap, but there there is an option if you wanted to use areas that are served by sewer and water.
So I I guess I'm just saying, I know like.
If we tighten up that area.
Yeah.
I want to see exactly, I can't see where the hell this is, when I'm looking at these, I can't even see the the roads, nothing, I I can't tell where this is.
Okay.
So. Am I the only one here, but I mean, come on, I I can't tell where this stuff is. I understand, but I can't see that, so.
We we need a. A map in front of us and we.
My advice is.
Play that explicitly.
I think that we need to tighten this up, at least from my standpoint, tighten it up. Smaller, much smaller. And that's just my, that's my thought, so.
Okay, does anyone else have any comments? We will wrap this one up if we can.
I think the table is.
Does Dawn have anything, anything more to say, please? Dawn?
I'm here. I under, I understand a lot of the concerns that are being raised, but I think that. A lot of it comes down to the fact that this is what the state is mandating. And so if you don't move in this direction at this time, there could be penalties, it doesn't mean that you can't change it moving forward, it doesn't mean you can't prioritize reexamining it. But my understanding of the state law as it stands is that we must comply.
But we don't have to comply or examine what's on here.
You're you're, you have to complete, this is what you've already predetermined to be. The growth area, whether or not that is still, would still be the today, the same under today's update. Remains to be seen because that plan is getting close to being finished, but it's not yet, so this is what you have that's formally adopted is what's in front of you. It can change in the future, but as of this moment, this is what you have.
To answer your question, Bruce, that was the two thousand ten conference and the designated right there, so Dawn was it.
I I just can't believe we made those designated growth areas and all.
I remember those were made, I remember those were made, you know, those areas were were added in two thousand and ten.
I guess we can we amend the growth, we amend the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan before this goes into effect.
It's absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll go on anyways, so.
So we can amend that at the next meeting and we can amend the comprehensive growth. Plan that we that we adopted, we can amend it to what we want to see here. For the area, correct?
If I may, there is a whole process to amend the comprehensive plan that involves a public input process, notification and a lengthy discussion. I I would suggest that if you decided to amend the plan, you would not meet the deadline.
So so Dawn, will you please answer the question that has come up? Under state law, must a municipality? Use the designated growth area as the footprint for the overlay district?
It can use that, it all, it does also have an option that says that you could use the sewer and watered areas. And what overlaps between the map that you have in front of you and that, I don't know.
So so. So what you're saying is essentially there are two options for the overlay district, one would be a designated growth area. And one would be areas that are served by public water and sewer.
Correct.
So how would we find that out?
There is a map for the water and sewer.
Yeah.
And we do have to, TV Con did us a nice map. I have to, yeah, I understand.
So it's going to be a lot smaller than this.
Well, we need, we need a map on the. We need a map on the bulletin board out here in front of us, we need separate designated growth areas, whether they overlay other other zoning districts or not. We we need to see that overlay on top of a large map sitting here in front of us. And 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 my thought is they should be tied into the water and sewer, or the water and sewer should be planned to tie into those in the future. Yeah, there's no need to jam the houses in the resource protection district.
Right.
If we have all these open fields, just because they aren't served by water and sewer.
Map, if you can read the roads, it does go into the areas that you were saying it should go into, like the area behind the Chevy and dealership.
It was the water and sewer there now.
Right.
So there'd have to be a proposal to extend it, right?
Right, so I mean, we'd have to still approve it.
Right.
But we don't approve it, the zoning board approves it, so.
Right, if all the parameters are in place and everything. Do everything appropriately to match everything that we've that we've approved.
Right.
Then we don't have a say in it.
I mean, right, but we have to already set the standard.
How much trouble are we in if we miss the deadline by a month on?
I don't know what the the fines and fees are. I don't know what the political implications are either, unfortunately.
It's okay. Doesn't look like we're going to make it, yeah. Who do I got, somebody out there? Sometime I'm a little tense, Steve, you got to holler, did you please come to the podium?
Yeah.
I mean, the sewer is pretty much all in the downtown anyway.
Yep. That's.
I mean, it is really small, I should have brought my magnifying. I know, that's.
Chair recognizes Steve.
I think it just maybe could have stepped out of my regular nuanced conversation about locations. To think about the affordable housing density overlay district cost, and it increases the density by two point five percent or two point five times, right? So in a residential area, the minimum lot size is forty thousand feet. And acre is something like forty-three. An acre is something like forty-three thousand feet, spread three thousand five hundred and sixty feet. So the number of, I looked it up, so I don't know that. So the number of units that you could have on an acre is not a hundred, like a large project, it would be three. The number of minutes that you could have on a two acre project, right? A status in a residential zone becomes six. And that's what you're talking about tonight on the affordable housing overlay district component. There are other aspects of this, of this uh, the amendments to the zoning ordinance. That you're talking about, and I really appreciate the nuances going into sewer and water, right? That's really important when you're talking about serving big projects, small projects, how we're thinking about the development of our community, where we want to see intentional growth, it's smart growth. Do we want the mill redeveloped, do we want, you know, do we want more rural areas redeveloped? Who's moving into town? When we're thinking about affordable housing in this context, the context is eighty percent of the area needing income for Katowice County, and I think I've said it before in this, in this room. Right, that those are what we're talking about is educational technicians at our school. Individuals who work at the Hannover, individuals who work at the uh, at Walgreens, individuals who likely work for the town. Who help operate our community. But I really wanted to point out that when we're talking about project size. We're talking about by ordinance, two point five was ruled in. Already, and that is one unit, and then you have to have five thousand more uh square feet. Per lot, so right, if you have forty-eight thousand square feet, you get one more unit, so now you have two point five more. Right, so that does change things, the more land you get. But maybe those larger lots are where we want to see development, but maybe not through your intentional long course conversation. I also think it's important to note, this was a task as well on April twenty twenty-two. So we have had a long runway to think about these things, although we do have a short, you know, we're coming up, we're almost on an air fat carrier tonight. We have to catch that uh, that cable going across and probably start the jet again. Right? So we do have some time to think about how we want to do this, have a well deployed ordinance that meets our town goals. But in the interim, we're talking about that two point five. And our density right now is not twenty-five units, it is not thirty units, it is a rather, you know. I think acceptable and respectable, one unit plus the five thousand square feet gets you another. For multi-classing in the zoning, so you can basically predict, track and write anything wrong in the residential zone.
My, my problem with this is unless I'm wrong and I've misunderstood things. Uh, for instance, I have, I'm not sure exactly, but probably thirty acres in the uh public water supply. And how many houses could I put on that thirty acres if it's in the overlay zone? Okay, three per acre on a public water supply? On separate? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me.
So it's that, it's, so you can have one per acre, right, right now? So then you can have two point five, and I don't know whether we, whether we ruled caught in our zoning ordinance, but let's assume that you can, right? So that would be ninety among thirty acres. But then you run into, you run into issues of financing. And what our, what our zoning board would do, right? Our planning board would do when looking through that, what is the feasibility of connecting and making sure, I think one of the parts in the uh ordinance that I read. Was that you need to ensure that there's capacity, not just the ability, not just that you can hook up. But that water and sewer capacity is there and on set.
That's on page two.
So it's not just that you have to land, it's that you have the capacity.
So it does have to have water and sewer. Not well, order and public sewer.
That's what I was saying, you can't service eighty units with one well.
Right, so there are, there are, this ordinance, the overlay district does not exempt you from all the other parts of the ordinance, it just gives you a boost.
So, well, the the problem is if you put the overlay district in an environmentally centered area. It's a useless overlay district if it's not, if it doesn't overrule all of the current zoning ordinance.
Well, I think right now when you're talking about, could this be more uh? Typically, I think is the word I wanna use, could you create this so carved out that is in every lot that you wanna have? And every lot that you don't wanna have is carved out, potentially. But it feels like based on the conversations that are happening at the town, that K V Talk has been working with the planning board to digitize the maps. Which from my understanding, may have been a Dewey Decimal System card rest still, and then you have to go in and pull out, and and that's something that we can look to do. But, I do hear you, and I think that's an important part that we, again, go to smart growth. Through our planning, but also intentionally protecting what makes winter a desirable community, what makes us so great. All the recreational opportunities and balancing what makes it a sustainable community.
Okay, does anyone else have comments? Steve, um, all right, let me defer to the uh. Citizenry first.
Thank you, Steve.
A little louder on the record, please.
Uh, William Chapman.
Thank you.
Uh, looking at building house, Sarah Mulder. And uh, Steve is much more elegant than I am, so I just have one question I gotta ask. It's gonna come off as confrontational, but I do not intend it that way. Um, why are you afraid of affordable house? What is it about affordable housing that you don't want is, I I'm not trying to read anything into that. But, like he said, we're not talking about low income house, that's a separation. But if you could get housing in here, and look at this, you got one person who talks about being real estate. I mean, who can afford a house to help bid people coming in and about to say? Pay cash, so if you've got somebody who wants to build a house that working class people can live. What's the problem?
Well, I I don't wanna be argumentative, but I'll tell you this. Uh, I shouldn't admit this because some people think it's shameful, but I grew up in New Jersey. The, now my point is, the creek that we used to play in, go fishing in, okay? Today, it's a concrete sluice wave, okay? Those quarter lots that affordable housing changed the landscape so drastically. That that creek, miles ago, literally dried up, it became a mud hole. And then it became a flood problem because gradually it filled in, and so now today it's a concrete sluice wave. The whole environment of, half of uh Mercer County, Jersey has changed.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And I don't wanna see that happen here.
Absolutely, and then, I'm speaking in general terms, I I wouldn't either. So, how do you grow responsibly and create affordable housing? Without trying to skirt the letter of the law that the state mandated? You know, you can make it so tiny that nobody's gonna do it, so if you can only develop a one, two, three main street. Get one by killing.
But it's, I'm just gonna speak one more time and I'm done. It it seems to me that, you know, reaching out into some more rural areas, pushing water and sewer out there to smaller lots, a half an acre on public water. Uh, um, you know, and sure, with the allowance of a secondary apartment in that building or adjacent to that building. That's fine, but I don't see, the way the way this laid out now, we're, we're overlaying. The affordable housing zones in all the environmentally sensitive districts and I'm not gonna vote for it.
You have to understand that some people on the zoning board are also members of our community. They're also concerned about where the growth gets developed. And they're not gonna make decisions to intentionally harm the community that they live in. They're also here, we we appoint them because we feel that they are knowledgeable and capable. Of uh leading our our town in the right direction, so you have to give them some credit. For for keeping our best interests at heart. So.
Okay, uh, Priscilla. Priscilla, go ahead. We can't hear you, you're muted, Priscilla.
Now I'm unmuted, okay. The uh. Affordable housing, we have a bunch of it downtown already along one thirty-three and other. Uh, Green Street, I think, and um. Well, I wanna point out that twenty-three years ago, our last mill closed, and the mills had. Affordable housing downtown. We were, we're panicking at stereotypical ideas, so I think. This overlay, I I agree that we should go ahead, if I were on the council, I would vote to do it. But I would be, we need more information, and the, uh, I just read the housing part of the comprehensive plan. This afternoon, and, but we already have. Well, we know we wouldn't get a teacher because they couldn't find housing. Uh, and I'm sure one anecdote is probably ten or fifteen cases of that. But the uh point is, we need something tonight and we need to to refine this. I I would vote. Well, if it, can we do it legally? Uh, without, without a public hearing, I mean, would we revise it and go back to a public hearing in, what was it, November eight? I mean, December eighteenth, nineteenth, whatever it was?
We're not gonna be able to know that until we vote here tonight. We may vote and get ourselves in trouble, or we may vote and go along in a hurry.
I I I recommend voting and uh and putting it on the record and then and then addressing it. Nobody's threatening to build anything at all this, right now, except market housing as far as I know.
Okay, thank you, Priscilla, thank you very much, uh, Jim.
Yeah, I think they're all good points, I mean, I think, I mean, I have family members, my sons are looking for homes. And they can't seem to bump the order, but I think that's, that's state wide, I mean, that's not talking about the town of Winter. So, can't broaden it up to, you know, the town of Winter to solve all the housing. It uh problems in the state of Maine and why people can't come here to work because they can't find a home to live. Uh, I think that's, you don't wanna go that distance. I agree with Elizabeth to the point where we want, we want to trust our, we we put the trust in in our planning board. Zoning board and all those folks too, but we also wanna give them guidelines. Because if you don't give them certain guidelines, they can follow their hamstring and having to pass something. That we don't exactly see eye to eye on or see see a value for our community. So I think we just want to pause and make sure that we've got a few bases to protect ourselves. So we create an area, and I'm not against. Building homes in town, I mean, again, I I thought this when I first started, I feel great, I got a lot in. And at my house, maybe I could build an in-law apartment or something, and then have all my family members live there. So I saw value in in part of this. I just didn't realize it was going to, thank you Steve for explaining it a little bit better, so now I have a better understanding of lot sizes and and dwelling sizes. But, I would like, the overlay just on this just is. Overwhelming to me because of 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 what it encompasses, and you're saying maybe it's in a lot of the. Protection zones that I I would like to see it shifted a little bit to a point, I mean, we know there's lots of places, I mean, uh. Up there in the old A Park, I mean, we always, you know, we wanna grapple or for it there, but I always thought that was a great place to to expand and. And have a housing done that way, I mean, there's, there's a space there uh for people to grow. But we wanted to grow in in areas that it doesn't feel like we're trying into a city. Cause we're a town, we're a town of Maine, and I like to keep it that way too, so.
Mr. Chair.
All right, uh, Anthony has called.
So, so Jim, if we don't wanna use the designated growth area, this is the other option that was outlined by. Ron, this is the area that is served by public sewer.
I don't know if that's a good one either, because it's all in town, cause that's where the sewer is.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna abide by state law, those are two options.
We can't make it up Turkey Lane and say that it has to have sewer and water, it doesn't meet that need, and I, but it's it's an area, so it doesn't get. Until we expand sewer.
Right, again, though, under the state law, our two options for creating an overlay zone. For this affordable housing is a designated road area or an area served by public water.
So if we take, if we do this right here. Then we take some time after so we can have more time to think about what it is we wanna do. If we just say, okay, we're gonna designate this, this right here, this one, it's a little bit smaller, it's whatever. Just the areas where sewer and, you know, service is, and then down the road. We can take a little bit of time, so we understand why, why can't you?
We have to adopt this tonight.
Okay, but we adopt it tonight, but we can, why can't we?
Vote for it tonight.
No, but what I'm saying is, if we adopt it tonight. This little, this right here. This and this one right here, which is a lot smaller than what we've seen.
Right.
Down the road, can we revisit this? When we have more time to think about what it is we wanna do?
Well, we'd, at that point, we'd have to change the designated growth area.
Right, but we can do that, we have more time. I don't feel comfortable voting for this, you know, I I'll do this. I mean, for right now, but I'm not, that's where those lines are, the little gray area, right?
The red.
With the red.
The red lines, I mean, which is a lot less than what this is, it's basically right in here.
So.
But so, I guess, that that's what I'm saying is if we adopt this tonight. And then, cause we have to adopt something by the, by the first, if we do that, we can revisit.
Expansion.
Expansion. When we know what it is we're doing.
Only by the growth area. And it's the only option.
It's by this area right here.
No, we have to modify the growth area, which is in.
But we'll have more time to do that.
But it's all part of the comprehensive plan.
You can always amend everything, you can amend anything. Yes, we can do a public hearing, what I'm saying is, I don't feel comfortable doing this.
Oh, I agree.
Without understanding what it is we're doing.
I I wanna just bring up one major point that we're all kind of missing at this point. Um, in this designated growth area, in these little lots that you have here. If we expand the designated area, they they don't need water or sewer, but one or two extra welling units. For example, I do make south rainhouse, that's two units, right? I could finish off my garage, that'd be a third unit. Right, that's it, that would bring more affordable housing to the area. But also, if more people went out and took these smaller lots, held duplexes, which it's not in the growth area. But on Miranda, there's already been the construction of duplexes down Miranda Grove. That are more for more affordable housing for elderly household, right? So, if we don't adopt that area, then people with smaller aspirations. To build buildings, to make more units available, won't be paying more taxes. Our tax burden will be spread out over a larger area, and we're all gonna continue to carry this huge tax burden that we're all carrying right now. The more growth we have in terms of expanding these smaller areas. The more the tax burden will shift outward and we will not all be further.
It it's, yeah, but it's gonna shift outward, but we have, then you require more services, then you require more of this, more of that, more schools. More, I mean, it it doesn't, whenever you expand, my thought, and again, this is where I am tonight. I will vote for this, I will not vote for this. And what I would like to do is to go back and revisit this. I'm not saying that no to everything here, I need to know what it is we're voting on. And if I don't know that, this I understand, but this, I I I'm really not comfortable doing that right now.
That only services water and sewer areas.
But that's, but that's okay for right now, we're not going out tomorrow and doing this. What I'm saying is it buys us a month or two, so we can come back and 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 have a public hearing. And have some people in here that can walk us through these areas and explain to us exactly what it is we're looking at.
I think Steve just did that earlier.
But he did it, but but what I'm saying is there's.
And when you're finished, then.
But what I'm saying is, if there's a ninety acre piece, you can still build. Do the math, what I'm saying is, so i- 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 again, this is where I'm at. You folks can be different in in a different place, I'm here tonight and I'll hold on to that and that only. And I would like to revisit this, sitting down just to talk about this and walking through this, that's where I'm at.
Okay, uh, e- irrespective of the consequences, and even that, okay. If I, unless I can't read the map. From here, it looks like Welch's Point, for Lord's sake, is a designated growth area. I I just don't get it.
Point has sewer.
The Wesley.
Yeah.
Designated growth area.
Even so, you're still having previous area standards, you know, it's already house on top of house down in there.
Because it's limited that way.
You know, um, and then that whole issue with Shore and Miranda Cook Lake is the designated growth area.
It is, but there is, the lots are being sold right now.
But that's just the sewer map, that's not the designated growth map.
Right.
Yeah, and 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 to speak to your point of growing and your importance, but the, you're right, the designated growth area is still on the table. It's the final piece of the puzzle to getting the conference, the plan done.
Right, so we still have some input in there.
Yeah.
Doing the plan and then we can swap over to that, the designated growth area instead of the sewer.
I think.
So I do, maybe I'm not saying what we're doing here, I think we're approving something in the comprehensive plan, or are we approving the zoning?
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may, you're only amending the zoning ordinance. There had, there were volunteers, there was a lengthy process in the two thousand ten plan. Wasn't just one set of eyes looking at it when that growth area was created. It may be new to you all or some, you know, people of the public around the council, but there were a lot of. On decision makers that went into this, so in moving forward to update it, it is the comprehensive plan process, which ultimately the council will adopt. But I would not recommend the council start that process ahead of the comprehensive plan process that's currently going on.
Yes, so again. So again, I think Linda's offered a good compromise, because if you're not comfortable with the designated growth area as it currently exists in the two thousand ten comprehensive plan. They're gonna get invited to that happen in the next month or two, when you decide what the designated growth area is gonna be in the two thousand twenty four comprehensive plan. And if you adopt this tonight and we meet the state mandate, then we can amend this later on.
Yes.
If you establish a designated growth area with which you're comfortable.
And we can amend this, we we don't have to, I mean.
All right, is everybody?
Uh Priscilla Jenkins has her hand.
Priscilla, okay, Priscilla, go for it.
Yeah, I just want to say, the the proposed comprehensive plan does include suggestions for. A couple types of co- of committees you could form to address the uh concerns that are being expressed.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, does anyone else have a comment or anything to say? Does Dawn have more?
No, if you.
Go ahead.
I I don't have anything to add, I'm just trying to follow the conversation and and speak to some of the concerns, but. It's always an evolving process, so the comprehensive plan is going on, you can always make modifications. Um you know, you don't want it to make a stopgap measure that's completely inappropriate, but you did have a committee. Who who determined that growth area, um and you have the alternative of the of the water and sewer.
Yeah, can I make a just a suggestion?
Can you one one turn around?
Okay, hold on, um maybe we want, again, I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is do vote for this, but. Maybe we ought to have a joint work session with the planning committee, so that we can walk through. You know, some of these areas and thoroughly understand what it is that we're, you know, voting on. I I mean, I I just think it makes sense, at least from my point of view.
As of our last contact with the planning committee, I believe it was Shannon, and she was told that they were out of the process.
For what?
The planning committee said they were out of the process.
Yeah, comprehensive planning committee.
And well, well, one of the things that Dawn texted me earlier, this conversation, I guess it's gonna uh. Is that it might be helpful to have, it might be helpful to have a workshop discussion with this group, just on planning matters. She can sort of help review on some important issues and things to consider whenever you're talking about planning.
I think we're always happy to give the time. Go for it.
I think, and I agree, with with Linda, you know, shrink these down. Because I have the biggest issue I have is with the size of the overlay. Because where I, we had, I struggle with is not having public water and sewer. I have a hard time thinking, what we're gonna do, dwellings outside of those areas, what are we gonna do with the wastewater? And how it's gonna be.
It would be the same as what it normally is.
No, we don't, it's not, the septic systems are going to, some aren't going to be able to handle more than a couple. You know, uh at the uh buildings on on certain systems. So you're gonna add another septic system, add another septic system to be able to put these dwellings on these pieces of property. So I I would just more concerned if like we had, if they had public water supply. It's a the the more easier it'll render for me to say, we can handle that, because it's being treated properly.
Well, what what I'm saying is, in the permitting process, they have to submit a septic design.
You know that today, I'm just saying.
Units that they're going to fill, and those units are supported by that design. They're not gonna haphazardly go in and willy nilly, it's gonna add one, you're gonna add one.
Say they were, just still more more and more septic, it's just more of a.
Well, they still have to be serviced, and they still have to meet regulation.
Okay, all right, anybody else? All right, the chair will entertain a motion. Two oh eight, consideration of zoning ordinance amendments to meet requirements of L D two oh three.
So I made a suggestion about how I might amend before you right now. So if the motion is to have the overlay district. As the same area served by sewer, then in paragraph two. You would scratch out the second thirty lines, so that it would read the Windsor affordable housing development overlay district consists of the area. Served by public sewer.
What was that, in the number two? So consists of the area?
Consists of the area served by a public sewer.
Yeah.
Well, well, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that there were one in the same, there are some areas I think that are served by public water. Yeah, there are some areas that are served only by water, and so in this instance, I think you you say that it is served by sewer. Dressed between the wastewater concerns.
So served by public sewer or depicted on the zoning map?
Yeah.
No, he's, she said, he said served by public water and sewer.
All right, excuse me, Steve, if you, if you, we'd appreciate more input if you have it, but you're needing more on the record.
Just like the serve by.
Can I ask a question, real quick?
Yeah, okay, uh Shannon.
Real quick, just a question, if we were to keep it condensed to s- public sewer and water, does that put any additional strain on those systems? As far as like needing to expand them or?
No, not at all, um we, because the bill shut down, it created a ton of capacity in that infrastructure.
Well, and also within here, it has to be available for all or do anything.
Yeah, and 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 so to speak to the demons, the demons, if you said. The area served by public water and sewer, then that would, that would limit this even more, because it would be where both those utilities are.
All right.
And I would hope that in the near future, we can. Fiddle with the language over it, because we need some way to encourage the public to want to board a sewer district. Consider uh expansion. How many houses can we do in that area? All right, I really, I really would like the the wind is up.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Um that we um amend. Um the zoning ordinance here um in article three. And number two, the winter, so that it reads, the winter of affordable housing development overlay district consists of the area. Served by public water and sewer, here it is.
Not as presented, but what you just said.
That's what I'm amending.
Yeah.
So that gives us, that that allows us for what we want to accomplish right here, right, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Dawn.
I I just want to note that if that language could include um that it would be depicted on the zoning map as the overlay district. So you're referencing the physical representation, um which is what Anthony's showing. But if it could also be referenced in there, that that area will be come on the zoning map, it will become and will shown as the affordable overlay district.
So.
Okay, can you clarify that for us, Linda, and then we'll address that. Yeah, yeah.
That's why I said so. Um again, we are going to amend the article three zoning districts on number two. The winter affordable housing development overlay district consists of the area served by public water and sewer. As depicted on the winter zone map.
It should have closed the public hearing, we call that about A fifteen and three, do you think? Okay, so do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, okay, roll call. Uh time for a roll call, please. Uh all in favor, Linda? Is Linda's in favor? Favor? Roy's in favor, Shannon's in favor, all vote. Okay, uh chair's opposed, Bruce is opposed, Jim's opposed.
This four to three?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna move on. My glasses will be all set.
They're on your face.
Oh, my God. Okay, uh. Okay, now we also need to know, we wish to waive the second reading. Um of the zoning ordinance amendments to meet the requirements of L D two oh three. Can I hear a motion?
Yeah, so the reason that you would want to do this is, without this, we have to come back in two and a half weeks. Vote again, and it would delay the implementation of this by another two weeks. So what we're all gonna do is waive the second reading, and in thirty days from now, this goes into effect.
I mean, we don't have a choice.
There's, there's always a thirty day grace period, almost any zone, any.
So we can wait a second reading, say. How does that work if we don't waive the second reading? It it just puts us out, it goes and go back?
Yeah, so it'd be thirty days, assuming that it it was approved, December eighteen, it would be thirty days after that.
So, but it had, at that point, it would be approved and we would meet the.
State requirements.
So we can waive the second, I mean, we don't.
Well, we don't have to. We don't have to. I'm assuming that if it's not waived, we have.
Three days.
It can come up for discussion in two weeks, correct?
It can.
Yeah, we might control this, you can.
So, I mean.
I uh I moved to waive the second reading of the zoning ordinance to read, need to require it to L D two thousand and three.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, all right, all in favor? Okay, let's just record show only Elizabeth and Shannon are in favor of that. Second reading will read in November eighteen. All right, item one, two oh nine, discussion of cannabis and liquor license fees. Who wants to start this one off?
All right, so. Thank you, Heather. So you folks know that we've been talking about fees for cannabis businesses for a while now. And so we did some more research into what other towns charge, and it's really advanced the gamut. You have some towns that are charging a annual fee of five thousand dollars, you have some that are charging a fee of zero. And so what we found was there's basically three approaches. One is, towns seem to have surveyed what other towns were doing and set. Uh the fee somewhere within that range, that seems to be the approach that number two. Uh number two, some seem to be discouraging cannabis businesses by by setting large fees. And the third approach is establishing it based on the cost of the town, which is what the the law says that we should do. So currently, the town charges two hundred fifty dollars for a licensing fee for an establishment that serves alcohol. For instance, you may recall recently, the American Legion was here, they were seeking a renewal of their liquor license. And that came with a two hundred fifty dollar fee to the town, in addition to the fee that they had to pay for the state. Um as far as I know, there's been no concern about that being by any business. And so, given the fact that um. Cannabis and alcohol are both adult substances, it seems to me to be appropriate to charge the same fee. And I think two hundred fifty is reasonable, considering the fact that the clerks, the executive assistants. Town manager and the council all have their fingerprints on this at some point, and so there are costs associated with with each one of those.
Anthony.
Yes.
We're not getting paid.
Yes, you are.
What is it, sixty dollars a year?
Uh but it might be simplest, again, just to do, establish straight across the board, the two hundred fifty dollars for all of these businesses. And uh in in addition to that, with cannabis, charging two hundred fifty, regardless of whether they are a medical dispensary. Or adult use, or whatever the category is, because. The expense for licensing each of those types of businesses is no different. Until we get to a point where we're having to go in and inspect businesses, and municipalities have very limited authority in that regard. And it seems to me that that should be the the fee for any type of cannabis business, regardless of what it is. So if you agree with this, what we can do is bring to you at the next meeting on December eighteen. Some language to amend the town's marijuana ordinance and the associated fee schedule. And go through the same process that we had just now, have a public hearing, we post notice, seven days no spark of a hearing. Have a public hearing, have a discussion, have a vote. If you waive the second reading, then it can go into effect thirty days after that.
Right.
Uh Linda, let's try to go, wait a minute, let's try to go around one by one and just kind of get this.
Uh I guess the question, and we raised this before, is. I I I get that this is similar to alcohol, it's it's an adult, you know, whatever. Um but the the difference was that there are limited licenses here in the town. And I guess my question is, does that not raise the bar? When you deal with limited licenses and not everybody can get a license? Um does that not limit and raise the bar on this?
Justify it.
And justify it, because to me, it is not simply an alcohol license, you just can't go and get it, there's a limited amount. And for that limited amount, there should be a consideration, because not everybody can get it.
Yes.
Or to, or or does it require everybody to put the license back in every year and we redo it? I guess that's the question.
So I did some research, I could find no evidence that the state is limiting the number of licenses. Uh or to me, it's a limiting the the number of licenses. So I think, and my recollection on this, Linda, is foggy at best. I think that may have been the case initially, when marijuana was legalized in the state of Maine. That there were a limited number of licenses, but I don't believe that's in effect any longer. I read a study from the Office of Cannabis Policy earlier today, and um I could find no evidence. That the number of licenses will be limited, because it talked about the fact that, I think, like. Nine and five percent of them were being approved, and the other five percent were applications that were incomplete and then lapsed, so. Yeah, I I looked into that, I couldn't find, I couldn't find.
Yeah, we, I know we had a discussion about it when we, when we did it in depth, I know that for a fact.
Okay, I've seen the photo.
Okay, so we gotta compare apples to apples and not apples to oranges, okay? And alcohol is currently sold in the grocery store? It's sold at Combi's, it's sold at Walgreens, and it's sold at bars, okay? We don't, we don't buy cannabis at Hannaford. We don't buy cannabis, we don't buy cannabis at the the the. Combi's, but we could very well in the future if this keeps up, but um. So my thing is that, number one, it is limited in scope. It's, it is, companies, yeah.
Never got head over that, everybody calls it that.
It is limited in scope in nature, because it is a completely different product. It's still federally illegal. Um we still could face uh legal challenges by the federal government, depending on who's in office. Right now, we have a marijuana friendly administrator for our federal government, but. You know, that could change down the road, and then what are we gonna face when we have all these licenses that we've handed out? Um so that would be a higher cost to us. Um and also, just the very nature of the product, it, they they oftentimes can raise their own. In their own facilities and then sell it in their in their storefronts, and. These guys aren't gonna be leaking bathtub gin and selling it at Sully's. You know, it's a completely different animal. So that's why I feel that that marijuana and cannabis has to have a higher. Um a higher fee schedule, because of. because of that very issue. Thanks.
You know, so at one point, their vacation to Hannaford is become a link to sort of businesses to not get our alcohol license from the town. It's only for.
No, but they sell.
They do sell it. Yeah, they do sell it, but they don't.
No offense, everybody, but that's a side subject. It's my turn, and I, I agree with you, I agree with this. And Shannon's turn now.
Agree with what? Thank you. So first off, I'm just gonna start and say, as far as comparing it to alcohol sold at Hannaford and Combi's, alcohol's been around a lot longer. I mean, marijuana has been grown pretty long, forever probably, but as far as the legalization of it, it's fairly new. I think we just adopted our policy into twenty twenty-one, and then just recently revised it in twenty twenty-two. So with it being so new, it's still something that's, I mean, I just think that there's certain perceptions of it as there were used, as there used to be with alcohol then. It's just a matter of changing those perceptions and then educating the public on how to use it. Like alcohol isn't necessarily safe to go down to a bar. Technically, right now, you can drink at a bar and drive home. For marijuana industries, you cannot smoke that or have it and consume it on sight whatsoever. It is the leading, one of the leading industries, I think, for revenue in the state currently. And what I've been informed is that most of the population that is consuming it right now through the medical industry or the adult-use marijuana is a subpopulation over the age of fifty. So as far as putting limited licenses, I do feel that we should have a limit of licenses for our town. Specifically, if that's something that we could add to our ordinance, I don't think that we have a limited number of licenses for our town currently. But that is something that we should put in, and I am for lowering it from fourteen and fifteen hundred dollars annually to two hundred and fifty.
Shannon, what would be your number of the limited licenses?
Anywhere, I don't know, three to five?
Of all kinds or of each?
I haven't done my research on that, I'd probably have to go.
How about if we, if we just stick to the fee thing now, and then we'll, we'll go again with the limited licenses in over time?
Yeah. And I do wanna thank, I think we have one of the representatives, representatives of one of the businesses here, so hopefully we'll get to her for her maybe cut me in.
Okay, Bruce, please.
I was on the town council, that was my first year, we voted as a council group to have those fees for dispensing marijuana in order to inhibit development, as in surrounding communities, to have eight or nine pot shops, recreational and medical, within the town ordinance. We, at that time, felt that that was probably the most important thing to do, since we couldn't regulate the amount of licenses at that time. And it was a fairly new area, so I can't vote to take the fees down from where they are right now. I think they were bargained.
All right, so my questions, I have a few listed things here to just touch on. And hopefully, thank you for being here, Cory. Who doesn't get inspections of your facility, you know, and, you know, regulate, making sure your guys are doing it, helping out? Does that state does that, or is that something in the town that has to be better, going with everybody?
Is that a question for me?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I do have a, I have an inspector for each of my stores.
And they're, they're a representative of the state?
Yeah, they're from the Office of Cannabis Policy, so the one that oversees the Winthrop store is Fred Luce.
And that's a person that, that you have to pay a fee to today, to the state?
No, no, I don't pay a fee for the inspections, he, he does the inspections randomly.
So you, you have to pay a fee to the state as well as the town?
I pay an annual licensing fee for my caregiver license, yes.
Yeah, but you don't have to grow it, but you do as a caregiver.
So I, we have a dispensary license in Wilton that covers our grow operation, and then our caregiver stores are run under caregiver licenses, and those are each just two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Okay. I do like the idea of limited licenses, which is that really kind of really, I think we should be going with this, because I think it does have a some merit, I mean, I'm not opposed to grow through town, I bet see business down, but we also donate and honor that. We got a ton of that stuff in town. And I, I feel also, I could be swayed into reducing the renewal of the fee. I think the onboarding would be where I'd say, I like the fee to stay where it's at, at a fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars. If you're, if you're a new business or company, I want to make sure you're gonna, you know, be upfront and be a decent business, put the money in for it. And then if you've been there and go issues as a renewal fee, I think that we can reduce that down to a certain number. But I, I think this, I think it's the initial phoning up the money for it, I'd like to see something like that.
So I'm just trying to see what we're gonna look like here, if we have a consensus for next month. But you're thinking that the initial fee should stay up there, the year-to-year fee should be two fifty, and then at a future date, we should consider limiting the number of licenses.
Well, I haven't heard from.
Okay, well, I know, yeah. We still got really.
To, to be clear now, could you throw a little curveball there? The application fee is only two hundred fifty dollars per.
Okay.
So it's, so it's sort of the reverse.
Of what I'm thinking.
Of what you're thinking.
Okay, was this my thought?
Yeah.
Well, if we could have an application fee and afford your, a first, you know, grand or so, and then after that, it's two fifty, we could deal with that. But I know, so what do you think, Rick?
I got a few, I guess mainly questions. I guess I still am wondering, if this, if the law is on these fees that we can only charge what it costs us, how are these other list of towns getting away with it? I mean, has the law not been challenged? Or is somebody's mic not maybe not mine? Or can you answer that?
Yeah, that's exactly it. That's exactly it. And it's, it's starting to, it's starting to snowball. We know of other stores that have approached their towns, and once they, you know, get legal consults, they're dropping the fees. So like, the conversation around whether, you know, you're, you're setting a fee to prohibit more of my businesses coming to town, that's illegal. If you're uncomfortable with my business because you can't buy, you don't have another pot shop around, those kinds of things, that they don't justify your fee. The law says that the municipality, municipalities' costs associated with the license or permit or procedure must reasonably reflect your cost. And, I mean, if you're gonna follow suit with other towns, and I do follow other towns, because we're close to Farmington and such, I would recommend you guys putting a cap on how many of these businesses you want in your town, that would be wise. But I also agree with having an initial higher fee. If I was on your board, I would want that from my type of business, because, but you should have, to justify that higher fee, I think that you should have one person on your board, like Shannon, who's starting to learn about our industry, who understands it a little bit more, that would look into these businesses and do some reference checks and check with the state, so that you can justify, like, you know, if you're gonna do a fifteen hundred dollar initial fee and a two hundred and fifty dollar renewal fee, then you have to, you still have to justify the initial fee. So, I mean, I, I paid the initial fee, and I've paid other fees. I'd be psyched to think that you guys are dropping it to two fifty, which makes sense, it's fair to me, it follows the law. Yeah.
You know, one, the other thing comes to mind, and, and this goes back to this, I mentioned at the last meeting was, you know, when you decided to come to town with your business, you were aware of the fees that were here currently already established.
Yes, you made that comment last time, and, and you are correct in that, that I really wanted my business in Winthrop in that spot. But that was also before my knowledge of the law, and now that I have educated myself on what the municipality's role is in with these fees and what you have to abide by, then I, I'm just, I'm just happy that the state actually sees it as, you know, treating me fair.
I guess the other thing too is, you know, again, I think that if we limit the number of businesses here in town, that opens up a whole nother can of worms, because where that goes is everybody will have to reapply every year. You're not guaranteed that you will receive, it is an open, I would think it'd be an open process, so that.
It's not how they do it in other towns, but that would be up to you, I guess.
But what I'm saying is, you know, with the limited amounts of licenses, and again, this is where I come up with what we've discussed in the past, that comes with, you know, I think we have to look at that and say, okay, every year, it's gonna be fair that we open up that process and that we take in, you know, I think the town needs to consider taking in the bids, or not bids, but just applications.
Or a lottery.
Yeah, a lottery, and just say, okay, does it, does this make sense to have?
Even if it's every three years? Or something of that nature, or whatever.
Yeah, because.
That language sounds very threatening, but I think you guys told me you haven't had a single applicant since I've been there, so I would, I would feel comfortable with that. And I would hope that Winthrop would side with me, I mean, I think we've proven that we're responsible and law-abiding, and I think that any of the.
But how else would you do, how else would you do if we only limited it to two or three businesses? How else would you do it? I mean, you can't just say, once you're in, you're in forever. I mean, I would think that if we have a limited amount of businesses, that we would have to, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but we probably have to open it up.
But Farmington, Farmington does it that way, like, we wanted to open a store in Farmington, but they only had five licenses, and all five are filled. If someone, if someone's business closed, or someone's business doesn't fall in line with the ordinance of their town, then that license opens up, and then I can jump on that license. I mean, the whole, I was watching all the towns within a certain, you know, radius of Wilton, and that's how I knew about Winthrop. I have no connection.
But where.
Doesn't Farmington have a higher fee? What is their license?
Yeah, Farmington has higher fees, yeah.
And you're trying to open a license in a business in Farmington?
This was before we opened in Winthrop, I had looked into Farmington.
So let's see, Elizabeth, can you go out one last time?
So, so my, my point in stating at all the places that, that alcohol is available to purchase was to point out that there are not as many places to purchase marijuana. The higher fees reflect the market versus the alcohol market. It's completely different, it needs to be treated completely differently. And if you are running your business fairly and efficiently, then I do not agree with the lottery system. I don't, I don't think that's a great way to do it, because you, as a business owner, you need to be able to plan your, your expenses in your year every year. Given that you found Winthrop attractive enough to pay the fees to come in and do your business here, as you've stated, our fees have prohibited in some way or form other people from applying, which actually helps to enhance your business. Therefore, I argue that you have no problem paying these fees in the future, and that if, if that's not, you know, if that, if you don't find that attractive, keep in mind that your business brings more traffic to our town that might otherwise, anything else that they could find, they could find in another town. But if they're within the periphery of our town, that brings more people to town, which puts more stress on our services, our police department, our fire department, our ambulance department, et cetera.
I'd like, I'd like to know if we do a lottery system, if it has to be where we automatically have to renew whoever it is we're doing it, we limit something. I'd like to know legally, do we, are we required to do that, or are we not, does that, is that prohibit other people from, from, from bringing out, you know, from having a business in town here, and legally, is that okay or not okay? So I guess that's twofold. What?
Go ahead, Jerry.
I understand your thought process and that lottery, but I, I'm gonna take the side of business owner on this one. If I opened up a shop, and I had established it, and I've got my signage, I've got everything out there, and then did no one gonna lose, potentially lose that license in a lottery the next year? That would be pretty tough. I think, I think having a waiting list, if you have people, if you have a set amount, and I don't care if you have sixty of them, maybe, just let's kind of put it down on a number. But if we, if they've established themselves, they're here, I mean, and it still has to come up, there's a renewal process each year for us to say, hey, you're doing well, or we don't like the way you're handling your business, and we can decline their license, right? And then it opens up for the next person that may want to open it.
But can you do that legally? And I guess I'm, I'm asking a question, is that, can you do that legally? We've been doing it.
Yeah, because we're offering them a license, and they're asking for renewal. We can, we can deny their renewal.
I'm saying is if we do, if we limit it.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of lottery.
But that's what I was saying, is if we limit it, can we do that legally?
But we don't necessarily have to have a lottery system.
It's not a lottery system, I'm just saying is.
Each way has its pros and cons. With a fifteen hundred dollar fee and, say, three or four businesses allowed in town, set a, set a number, right? She's got exclusive rights with three other businesses, but a little bit of a higher fee. If we want to reduce the fee and have, look into something like a lottery system, or something like that, and allow other people to come in town.
I just don't see, you know, every year, the bars and alcohol dispensaries always come to us, and we ask them to see if there are any problems, if there are any problems with your license renewal. I don't see why we're not treating the dispensary business the same way, okay? I, I just don't, all right?
Because they've been really regulated.
Yeah, it's a little different than that.
It doesn't matter, you can only charge a fee for what it costs your town to issue my renewal, and it does not cost the town of Winthrop fourteen hundred dollars. It doesn't. And I just, I just don't, sometimes I get so frustrated listening to your meetings, because you guys all talk about my business so negatively, calling it a pot shop and all these places, and we don't want more of you here, and you're a stress on our services, and all this stuff. It's so hard for me to sit here when I know that half the community is coming into my store, some of your family members come into my store, and we treat everyone so kind, and we abide by all the laws, and I think you should cap it, do I think it should be a lottery? No, will my husband have a heyday with that? Yes. But I, I just, I'm just asking you guys to be fair about this, regardless of how you feel about cannabis. Is, we're there, the, the law says you can't charge me more than it costs you. Two hundred fifty dollars is fair.
I agree. So, so we have been advised by legal counsel of the town to tell you in the N M A that Miss Black is in fact correct, because of what the law says. So now I'm gonna climb up on my soapbox, this is a, this is another same counsel that I like to use from time to time, rather than eating it up.
She's into one about health.
So I like to say that we're done. We enact law, we enforce law, we're on around to follow the law as well, and so in this, I think we be well shot by simply following the law.
Well, I, what I'd like to do, if I don't get shot or knocked off the chair or something, is maybe ask Anthony and Shannon about something that will, then we can all reach a consensus on it in the next meeting, that's fair to all concerned, including Miss Black, because she kind of represents your businesses in town.
Yes, so, so as I said, I think it's fairly simple matter of just amending the existing ordinance and associated fees schedule.
Well, I think to get a consensus, we might have to regulate the number of businesses, okay? Because there's a lot of sentiment for that out here, and maybe we might have to charge an initial fee a little bit higher.
Okay.
And then go down to two fifty from there on out, renew your cycle of electricity.
So.
Trying to please everybody.
I'm a pragmatist, so I'm happy to do that, but before we invest any time or energy into that, I just want to make sure we've got at least four of you guys are like open to that possibility, not that you're gonna vote for, but that you.
Okay, Chair called a straw ball, you just heard, I don't ever did that. Who's, who likes the sound of that?
I think it's fair, I mean, I, I agree, we want to follow the law to what we can, and I do want to build areas for business, despite whatever. Just to what we can and I do want to build areas for business despite what I'm doing, whatever you may think of us. Corey, I think we're, we're trying to be fair to what we want on the, on the level of your views.
Thank you.
I don't like being threatened with lawsuits and I don't know why we can't revisit Waterville's policy and Romford's policy. And Gardner's policy and increase our fees, um, to. You know, make it more desirable to open a closed franchise here in our town. I, I can't, uh, I can't see revising the fees. Right now.
Right, right.
I certainly, uh. I guess I'm not opposed to the, the lowering the, the cost of the, the. Annual license only because it's the law. But I would not be, uh, on board with lowering the license and lowering the annual fee and limiting. Uh, limiting the number of stores that can compete with any stores at the, at, you know, it's, it's a.
I can deal with that. So, so to make sure I understood what you said, boy, so.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna reduce the, the fee to two hundred fifty dollars to follow the law, I think it needs to stay in open market. Instead, instead of closing it down with one or two stores and having.
Doesn't that contradict what you've talked about though? Like, look at the town of Livermore Falls. They didn't cap theirs and now they have six stores all in the downtown area. And now they're trying to cap it. Wasn't that the point of the high fee was to prohibit having all kinds of shops? And so now you want to not cap it and leave a lower fee? That's opposite of what you've been saying all along.
I just, I just don't think it needs to be, I don't think that we need to govern. For three businesses to thrive in town if the visa, if we're, if we're following the letter of the law, two hundred fifty dollars per year or whatever.
Yeah, I actually agree with that.
I'm okay with the two hundred fifty dollar renewal. But I think that the initial fees need to stand as we add them set before. I think, um, that it benefits both Miss Black. And the town to have them set the way they are.
Well, initial fee, that is then two hundred fifty there.
The initial fee right now is two fifty.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the licensing fee, licensing.
The licensing is two fifty, but we can charge.
So, so, so what we're talking about is potentially lowering the annual fee to two fifty. The initial application fee.
Is two fifty.
Is two fifty.
Are there any regulations against that?
There is, there are not, that I'm aware of.
So.
So the initial one, we can up, up it.
Yes.
Well, yeah, well, I don't know. We'll get Shannon and Anthony a shot, see if we can reach a consensus and get this over with next week. I think Miss Black's made some good points, it's been very patient with us.
So let's just open it all up.
Yep.
Let it all come in.
Well, I, I really think somebody in the mental thing, you're gonna reach a certain number of stores where. Potential dispensers are gonna be saying.
That's actually, you know.
Licenses, that might attract some more people.
It will attract some more people, so I guess.
Maybe somebody move into the telephone.
Take over the bill. Fill the bills.
All right. Do, uh, you have some idea of where, where we're headed there, Andy?
Yeah, direction.
All right, then we'll move on if that's okay with everyone.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you very much, Cory. Well, all of your peers should be happy with you and, uh, your efforts and. Okay, two ten discussion and another discussion. And consideration of amending the policy on take home vehicles. Okay, I believe all of it, uh, you're up.
Yeah, um, I'd like to make a motion. To extend the council, uh, past the nine o'clock hour. It looks like we're approaching. It's a ten?
Leon?
Yeah, right.
All right, so I, I talked to Anthony, um, earlier last week. In reference to adjusting our policy on take home. What we're finding. The focal position, the possibility of having. Is. We're not getting anybody. With any experience. Who wants to apply. Because the cost of living in this community and the surrounding communities. So if we extend that. Take home cruiser policy of the, say twenty, twenty-five, thirty miles. Uh, from the wind station, that's gonna open up. The ability to, to. Grab some experienced officers who won't have to relocate.
What is it now, Paul? I honestly don't remember what Ryan said.
Ten miles.
Okay. That is what we're short.
Yeah, it's, it's, um. And, and to get the policy, to get the program started, that's what these fellows needed to do and, and I appreciate that and, but. The market, the way it is right now, we're trying to recruit officers, I mean. It, it's just, it's just burdensome trying to find someone with any experience that, um. Being important moving into this area because the car and housing is so expensive. They were put out. Meantime, um, Sydney, that according to home prices. West and north of Augusta. Uh, we have two officers that have been, got started now, the sixteen to eighteen miles. They were ran by the program, but they're already employees here. We have done. Fifteen, probably around fifty interviews in the past few months. Trying to recruit people to come to Winthrop. Uh, people with experience, people who blew that, give you a category of life. They like, they like the idea of a take home cruiser, however. When you tell them that, well, you're living in, in Boston. You don't qualify for that because you're outside the ten mile, ten mile range, so. Just the money alone is not what attracts them. We're talking about this program was set up designed to. Um, retain employees, to recruit employees. And by extending that, that policy range out of twenty-five, thirty miles, I think it's just gonna increase our. Ability to attract more people that, that you, who have experience.
I mean, how are we talking about? How much more money are we talking about? Not, not that many. I wouldn't think it was that, it would be that much.
No, we're not talking about, I mean, talking about fifteen, twenty miles more of the gas money, you know.
I'm okay with this personally. I don't have a problem with it.
Essentially, a gallon of gas per day per cruiser. They're not getting paid travel time, right?
No, they, they, they're shift start at a specific time at four in the afternoon. So they have to be within Winthrop by four in the afternoon.
So Chief Matt, would you please briefly just explain the operational advantages of take home cruisers?
One of the, one of the. Aside from recruitment and retention, uh. When we have a situation like what happened to Moston. Uh, and we should have to have another one here. Um. These guys, their cruisers are all set up with their gear in their cruisers. They respond right from their house to wherever the crisis is. They don't have to come to the station. Get their gear, load it into a car and then go to the scene. They, they, they respond right to the house, right to the scene, which is a tremendous benefit. And they've got all their equipment. You know, you've seen what we've got in the back of those cruisers, again. Close your mind the amount of equipment we have in the back of those, but when they show up, they're everything from. Photographs, crime scenes, everything they need is in the back. They need it in the back of that car, so. It, it really is an advantage to town to, and to us, to PD who are not go. Actually.
If, if I remember, and then James is next, I'm sorry. If I remember right, it was a big plus when, uh, it was initially proposed. That it really increased our on-call police availability, you know, at least twofold. You know, I mean, you're gonna have a few occasions when the police are home and they've got a couple of S one, but they can't respond, they're off duty. You hope, right? But, you know, I mean, for the most part. You know, all the off-duty police are gonna be out there, right?
True, isn't it? So, so one of the things the chief had, uh, told me is that an officer issued a take home cruiser. That officer has to acquire, report to duty if they are needed at a certain time, is correct, chief. So then they just don't.
So the take home cruisers, those are just strictly transportation to and from work, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought.
And, and, and there's a caveat that if you're on your way home and you need to stop and grab a gallon of milk, it's good, but you get home, you know. It allows you to do that.
But you're not gonna go from home on a Sunday afternoon when you're not working and head to Sam's Club and fill the back of it with.
I don't think stuff can fit in there.
Okay, um, I saw here, cause you mentioned. It's currently ten miles, it says ten or twenty mile radius.
Yeah.
So can you help clarify that a little bit?
The, the, because we had two people. Already working with PD that lived outside that ten mile range. That the twenty mile came in. Uh. Because they live, I think one lives sixteen point eight miles and everyone lives sixteen point three miles from PD.
Yeah.
So the, 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 the grandfather goes to him, so every twenty mile came in. Because of those two gentlemen that were already established within the community, but any new hires. Have to be within ten miles.
Within ten, that helps define that. The other, take a couple of, of points, um. How many extra cruisers do we have kicking around? Just one?
Yeah, totally true, so if someone's trying to go to service. We have to stay on the, they can ask.
So, so we're actually, cause I, I, I think of it. I'm a big believer, I like to have people that, that work in our communities, live close to our communities. I mean, I'm not, I understand the cost of living. I mean, believe me, this is why I'm sitting here in the council, so hopefully we can keep the cost of living down, right? So it can attract that. Um, I, I do worry about sometimes, cause I hear from constituents out there. Oh, I just saw with the cruisers going to a soccer field, picking up their kids, not in uniform, blah, blah, blah. So. I mean, we hear a lot of that static, but that's for you to manage, Paul, not for me to manage. And, I mean, and I trust that you'll do that. Um, I do see upping it up ten miles, both ways we're talking now. You know, it's, it's a sixty mile round trip. I mean, you don't want to fall in the back, uh, you know, wear and tear on the vehicle, um. But and then, and my other concern, uh, would be is making sure that, that their timing is, they're in, you know, that travel time. It's necessary when they leave their house, they're clocked in. But again, that's something for you to manage, that's just for me to bring up.
And, and, and they have the, by policy of the department, they actually have now. Sure. Half an hour, fifteen minutes, so they have the ability to, from night shift to day shift. What they dealt with.
Right.
And for maybe what's important, so they're required to be there at a certain time. Um, to address the, the constituents that talk to you about the soccer game, okay? When my detective goes home. She doesn't bring her cruiser because she's on call all the time. She doesn't bring her daughter to the soccer game.
Yeah.
Practices, the cross. It's just the nature of the beast. I mean, if I need her in the middle of the soccer game, I call her and she's coming, you know, I.
Does the child ride in the back or in the front?
That's all.
No, I, I just bring it up because the more we. You know, people are gonna probably say more if they see more of the winter cruisers outside, further outside our city limits and, and, you know. We hear it, it back. I mean, I heard that a long time ago and I didn't bring it up because it's just. Something that I just, it's something you guys can address, they can address at the town member you, but. I was just bringing it up as a, a general consensus that you may hear more of it, so that's all.
Well, I know, I know that, I'm sorry, I know that a lot of times the officers have to bring you out of town because they have to show up in court. So they'll, they'll be there, you know, in Augusta. It's a bit of a court date to challenge somebody on a ticket that they're challenging or, you know, testify. So there's a lot of reasons why they have to be out of town.
Paul, what is Mama's policy on that? What is Mama's range? Do they have a range?
Right now, theirs is twenty. I was twenty over one.
But that would still get them listed.
I, I certainly don't have a problem with twenty, twenty-five anyway. Uh, and I, I know on tape and all that, but I, I think there are just a few certain people. That need to understand, uh, that need to lighten up. Every time they see a police car, it looks like it's not. Doing what it should be, they don't need to be on the phone. Probably one of us is calling, Anthony or Paul, they need to have some trust. We have a really hardworking, dedicated police force. We need to have.
Make sure they see it, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to amend the police department policy on take home vehicles. To include officers who live within thirty miles of the police station.
Second.
All right, we have motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Record show, six are in favor? Or not? All not in favor? Let the record show Shannon's not in favor.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, let's go on here.
It is getting later, I was starting to, uh, correct. Okay, um. Uh, two eleven, discussion of consideration of town policy governing committee roles, responsibilities and processes.
So this is in fact the same proposal that was reported previously. With Elizabeth's suggestion highlighted on page two. Which was a, a good suggestion.
Anybody else want to jump in? Okay, that's a discussion. Okay, and it also calls for a motion, so if there's no comment, uh, the chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the policy on committee roles, responsibilities and processes as presented.
Okay, any further discussion? All are in favor? Let the recto, all are in favor. Okay, item two twelve, consideration of approval of minutes November sixth and November twenty council meetings. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes last, is that done?
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, direct, all in favor, let the recto, all in favor. What I missed?
I'm just tired. I'm just tired.
I didn't know, you know. Yeah, you're tired, you got ahead of me. Move to approve dispersal. Okay, move to approve dispersment warrants as presented. Yeah, that's motion. Say, all right, item two thirteen, consideration of dispersal warrants. I'm talking stuff, I wanna get.
I move to approve the dispersment warrants as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Record show, all in favor? Okay. Two fourteen, consideration of recommendations from any appointments, maybe, Bruce, you have any recommendations?
I have no recommendations at this time.
Okay. All right, see, all right, that one's done. Other visits, probably comment again? Anybody?
I just, can I just, I wanna revisit something real quick.
You're a member of the public, so you can actually comment.
So I, I just wanna clarify when we were talking about the marijuana ordinance. You cut it out. Let the record show that I physically threatened the chair. I just wanted to clarify that we have this outline here for the fees for the marijuana ordinance. And the application fee is two fifty, but the annual license fees are much higher. It's the annual license fees that are much higher.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that before the, before the consideration.
Okay, thank you, that was good. Thank you for not punching me.
You're welcome. You got a hell of a right.
All right. Town managers report, Anthony, uh, no offense intended, but you know, we want you done.
All right, so, uh. So, I'll with Bill Sociu, a town attorney. Advised that we have a tax-acquired policy and now we need to update that to, to keep it in. He advised that we have a tax acquired policy and now we need to update that to, to keep with the new laws. So I'm going to be bringing something to you for your consideration at next council meeting. We had our sign an auction on Sunday. I told me your prayers, you never probably, not a bicycle. Councilors steal and, come get your saves. We raised a total of three thousand and fourteen dollars. Eighteen fifty of that was from the six by six.
More importantly, we got the building.
We got the building cleaned out, but didn't sell as long as the transfer station. And now we will start considering some potentially uses, us, usages of that building. Uh, on Thursday is the deadline to submit a proposal for our assessing RFP. And so hopefully we will bring that contract for the installation at the next meeting.
I had one question on that. On that assessing RFP, does, does the, uh, does that include the updating of the property tax cards and all that stuff? Is that the assessor's responsibility? Or is that the response of whose responsibility is that?
The assessor.
Okay, there, the ones we have now are, is there like a term or something that, that they should be caught up by?
So I do know that there is sort of a cycle that they go and make it progress. Of course, all of the provides during the revaluation process.
They'll be refined, whether they be updated in a, in a month.
I thought digital maps were done.
The what?
I thought those digital zone maps were done.
That's the zoning back, I'm talking about taxes.
Yeah.
Those two different things.
I know. But I, I'm saying, look, we're having a comment period here during the meeting tonight. It didn't sound so the digital voting mass were done.
No, the, the zoning maps are done.
Okay.
Chip Rose here, it hasn't been said. But the zoning maps, they just.
Yeah. So, so, so to answer your question, councilman, the revaluation process, they, they were physically looking at recent property and, and update records for the exteriors and if they can get inside the interiors as well.
I'm just talking ownership. You know, the, a lot of the ownership stuff, there was just a, uh, uh, somebody I know just went to sell a piece of property. And there was, uh, on the property, there was six of Butters. And the problem, the, it was so far back that the big chunks of property that were broken up, it was all in like two properties, there's only showed two, two properties or owners of Butters to, uh, on the records that we have, they actually had to look in, you know, do the legwork to find out who the other property.
That, that's what I'm saying, like the town tax maps are not, they're like an estimation. They're not always accurate.
Yeah, and of course the tax maps just show the delineations for each parcel. And so you're talking about ownership. And so if people have issues with those records being out, it'd be really helpful if they called us, including the town manager, and just bring attention so that we can get that addressed.
Who, who is responsible, who is responsible for being the tax map? Is that also the assessor?
Yeah. Yeah, but, but it's, but it's by hand on my own map.
Yeah.
So like, uh, years and years ago, I had the hotel, probably, okay, um, survey. And there was some issue with property lines and stuff. And I, when I was there, I gave a copy of the, the survey to the tax and it's on record.
Yeah.
And that's what homeowners need to do. That's a really kind of a private issue. It's not really, you know, a dispute for the town if it is a dispute.
I, I know. This is town managers report.
So, yeah, we gotta go.
Okay, and the other law of P news, uh, this morning I sent to each of you the, uh, heat pump efficiency main RFP draft. It has been, uh, reviewed and blessed by efficiency main that I wanted y'all's eyes on in case you have some suggestions. But if you have suggestions, please send those by noon Monday. Could be able to issue those on Thursday. Have those due maybe December twenty eighth and then over. Um, the contract on January the eighth, speaking of which, the first Monday in January is January the first. So can I maybe correctly assume that instead we'll be on the second and fourth Mondays?
Yeah.
And January, okay, great. Uh, and lastly, so the next meeting, we will have an executive session to talk about the town, town managers evaluation. Do you, while we're in executive session, talking about personnel management, could also encourage this topic of uh, potentially sharing a public works director with one, is that a discussion that you'd like to have during that executive session?
Yep.
Okay, and.
Is that something that qualifies for that?
Yes, I did speak with the town attorney about that and he said, since we're talking not just about a position, but about a specific employee.
Okay.
And, um.
Excuse me, January second, would you say?
And then December eighteenth, excuse me, did I say January? This is for eighteen, next, next meeting. So.
That's what I thought.
So do you, would you prefer to have that executive session at the beginning or the end of the meeting?
The beginning.
The beginning. So, so we'll meet, so that meeting starts at six, so we'll start at six with an executive session. Should, at this time, do you want to spend talking about personnel management before we open it up to the public?
Half hour.
I would think a half hour would be.
Yeah.
We used to always start at six no matter what.
Yeah.
Start at six.
Want to start at six?
Six, yeah, six o'clock.
And then what time we open it up to the public then at seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Well, only thing I'll ask you, don't load up the, uh, the, the regular agenda after that, we, we're gonna be tired in the holidays.
And we, just from your report, you didn't mention where we have in real estate. And I was gonna warn you, but where the listing's mentioned today. Sorry. So, so again, as my, uh, the tax part of policy, Bill Socia suggested we need to update the policy before we start, for one, if you notice, those products. So that's the next, uh.
Perfect, thank you. Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, my intention is to bring it up in his policy.
Okay.
I think it's been a few years since we've done that.
Oh, he's finishing. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. The second?
Second.
Okay, the record show, all are in favor of adjourned at this time. Thank you, everyone.
Yes. I'm so tired.
Yeah.
So.
You know, it's hard sometimes, everybody has a say and somebody says something, doesn't do.